The notice required provided for the open meeting, public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was promptly given. Said notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News and Star-Ledger on Wednesday, January 9, 2019, as well as posting of the bulletin board in the city clerk's office. Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Council members are body.
Here.
Present.
Good.
Present.
McCray.
Present.
Storch.
Here.
Vice President Hakaday.
Present.
And Council President Mills Rinsen.
Present.
And we have all members present at the forum.
Mr. Clerk, are there any communications from the mayor?
Yes, as our mayor, Ted O'Laap, has submitted the following nominees for advice and sent from the governing body. It's Carl Marshall, served as the Plainfield Municipal Court Judge. Captain Nicole is our alternate number two of the Plainfield Zoning Board. Charles Longstreet Wagner to the Plainfield Shade Tree Commission. Council President?
Yes. This is another straight-up.
Yes, the administration would like to pull the third one, Charles Longstreet Wagner, and we would like to pull it when it's time.
Council, any questions, any problems? That's the administration. Would you like to pull? We're good?
Yes.
Okay. The bill, list, and other financial documents have been sent to council via email. We will now move to discussion items, and we will go to our Director of Economic Development to introduce.
Good evening, Council President, council and public. We have with us tonight Kenneth Hart from the New Jersey Economic Development Authority. And effective today, April 1st, the city of Plainfield is part of the Business Lease Initiative. And we were one of 13 communities added to this program. And Mr. Hart will explain the program. Thank you.
Thanks. Members of the council, thank you for allowing me. I'm with the New Jersey Economic Development Authority. And just to kind of back up, our purpose in life is to bring jobs to the state, to keep businesses here, and to attract businesses from other places. And just for example, there's a little company called Karts Mobile that purchased a little piece of property on Third. They're coming here from Brooklyn. Can't afford Brooklyn anymore, found a place that they want to call home here. So, we turned around and we were able to give them, we administered the tax incentive program for the state. We were able to give them, let's see, $3.7 million in a grow award. That gets spun out over 10 years, provided they perform the way they promised to perform. To back that up, in order to help them purchase the property, bring it up to speed to the way they want it, we participated alone with Lakeland Bank for the tune of $1.85 million. Our portion of that was $823,000. But the bigger thing, we're retaining 25 jobs in the company itself, and they promised to bring in 34-year jobs. So hopefully those will all be local people. So, with Governor Murphy's stronger and fairer economy, we recognize that, you know, small businesses, new enterprises need some help. We started what's called a Small Business Services Unit. And part of what we do is we make loans, loans to lenders. We call them CDFIs, Community Development Financial Institutions. We extend credit to them at low rates so they can turn around and extend that credit to entrepreneurs and small businesses that normally have a little trouble getting financing. We also provide technical training. We have a contract with UCEDC, and they provide entrepreneurial training for people. We cooperate with small business development centers for that. We also have a program going on now called the Bonding Readiness Program. We partnered with the African-American Chamber of Commerce to provide that program. There's 30 businesses going through there now, small contractors that want to be able to compete and get a piece of the pie from the state and federal government. But the big thing that I'm here for tonight is that we recently turned around and said, okay, how are we going to help downtown areas? We selected 13 cities. Plainfield is one of them. We worked with the city itself to delineate a certain tract of land where we want to attract business. There is a business, it's called the Business, Small Business Lease Assistance Plan. And what's going to happen, places that are going into these properties, 500 to 5,000 square feet, can be incented 15% of their annual lease as a reimbursement for two years. So for a small business going in, it's a big shot in your arm for that. It's a $500 application fee, $100 administration fee, but it's a grant. And you don't hear much about grants anymore. Is it proper to take questions, or?
Council members, anyone have a question? Yes, council, and Storch?
It sounds great, and glad that we're participating. I'd like to hear more about how the incentives work for hiring local people. Like, for example, how will the Economic Development Authority or the city monitor whether local residents are being hired, and what would be the consequences of them not meeting whatever standard is set?
I really can't comment on that part because unfortunately I don't pay the grow award itself. To date, my knowledge is a fact, I'm not sure how it would be handled. Sorry.
Yes, I've been working with the company. They are relocating from Brooklyn to Plainfield, New Jersey. And they have made a commitment to hire Plainfield residents. I will be monitoring that associated with them. They're going to bring 22 to 25 of their people with them, but they do plan to expand into an additional 30 jobs. The Grow New Jersey program is about relocating businesses from other places outside of New Jersey to the state of New Jersey. That's what they're incentivizing. And so, we will have to monitor the employment, the jobs. We'll be advertising them through our social media publications as well.
So I know that with our other projects in the past, that we were advised that we could set specific requirements for hiring local people, but that we could like have a, kind of like a gentleman's agreement, that they would make good faith efforts. But with the amount of government aid that they're getting here, is it possible we could go beyond a good faith effort to actually set standards that would be tied to government financial support?
Okay. First of all, it's definitely state funding, not local funding, so I want to make sure that I point that out. But, the way that we can give Plainfield residents an advantage is to ask them to open up the housing process to Plainfield residents before they open it up to the general public.
That would be a start, but I would appreciate if either our Economic Development Director or somebody from the state could clarify what the, how the incentives are tied to performance, if we could get that information before we have to vote on it next week, I would appreciate it.
Okay. We're not voting on anything for the cart equipment. They went through site plan approval, through the zoning board process. Again, it's a state incentive, and the state is concerned about New Jersey jobs, not just Plainfield jobs.
So there's no resolution tied to this?
No.
Okay, I'd still appreciate that information.
Okay. Just a, to your, councilman. Any other questions?
Council President, I have a question. You said that the new business lease initiative, you all picked a parcel of land. Can you tell us where in the city that land is located?
Okay. We have outlined UEZ area as the zone for participation in the Business Lease Program. So it's all of our urban enterprise zone.
So just to clarify, is that a partial land, is a designated area, is an entire area designated to participate in the program?
The program itself, it's a three-year program, pilot program. Each year, there's a pot of $100,000 to be used, all right? So, and it's basically a use-it-or-lose-it proposition. So, some of the other cities, basically, you know, they've concentrated on one particular area, some of them concentrate on the full UEZ, you know, and that's been up to each individual city.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
When is this starting, going to kick off?
It starts, it's effective today, April 1st.
Okay, thank you.
The application's on our website, you know, there's a program flyer on our website.
And we also will have it in Friday's newsletter in terms of the application process.
Mr. Hart, thank you for all the information. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Representatives of PSCNG?
Yes, they are, Council President. I have Mike Coyle from Public Service along with his team to give you an overview of what we're looking to do. It's about eight miles of roadway here in Plainfield to enhance our infrastructure. We're looking to put new gas mains in throughout, and there will be some roads that will have a moratorium on, so I'll be looking to go before council to get approval for that at our next meeting. However, there are roads that don't have a moratorium we want to look to get started on. And then, so this is to enhance our total infrastructure, and also look for them to go from curb to centerline where applicable, encourage the curb in some areas when we talk about the moratorium. So I'll have Mike come up to further elaborate on what's going to happen.
Good evening, Council President, Council. I'm Mike Coyle, Public Affairs Manager of PSCNG. All right, thanks. Just briefly, three years ago, we started a program with the approval of the Board of Public Utilities to replace our AGG gas main. Mostly cast iron main and steel main have been in the ground since we incorporated as a company over 100 years ago. So, those are the pipes where we have done most leaks and our most problems. Over the course of the first three years, we did about 450 miles throughout the state. Very successful program. And we went back to the Board of Public Utilities last year for an additional five-year approval, which they gave us, to replace about 875 miles over the next five years. So, a portion of that, the program for this year, we identified a grid in Plainfield that we like to replace. We have, it's a grid that has a fair amount of leaks in it. The intent of the program overall is to improve the safety, the reliability, the cleanliness of our system, and also to provide higher gas pressure within the grid we're replacing for better efficiency utilization with equipment, and the high efficiency equipment that the residents and businesses have now. So, I just wanted to ask Kate Almeida, our construction manager, to talk briefly about what the plan is for Plainfield and the specifics of the planning of Plainfield.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you. So as Mike mentioned, we have a significant grid in the city of Plainfield that we want to replace. The replacement project is eight miles of cast iron gas main, including just over half mile of upgrading, which means making the pressure higher for existing plastic main, and replacement of roughly 980 services. Now, in that grid, we have a main that is as old as from 1907, so over 100 years old. We're looking to replace this gas main. In addition to that, Mike had mentioned, we had over 24 main breaks in that grid. And in addition to that, in 2018, we had over 77 leaks that were called in, just on that grid, that we had to go in and replace in more of an emergent situation. So we would proactively replace this pipe. And there's a couple of benefits to the customers. We will be installing strong, durable plastic piping, which will reduce the number of leaks. The higher gas pressure will provide better support of high efficiency appliances, which will ultimately reduce the gas consumption for the customer. And we'll also be relocating the main from inside the home, excuse me, the meters, from inside the home to outside the home, which provides for faster access to the meter in the case of an emergency. And it also makes it easier on the customer, they don't have to be home for appointments and things like that. So as far as the program goes and the finances are concerned, the BPU does mandate strict financial limits on the way we spend the money, but the intention that the bulk of the cost is consumed on the actual infrastructure upgrade, and not, you know, limiting the costs on items like restoration and traffic control and things like that. So for a typical street, we do restore curves to one foot past the trench. And what we're looking to do on a number of these streets is to restore from curb to centerline, which would require relief from the curb-to-curve moratorium. So that is what we want to, you know, discuss as well. So in general, the program, this project has been identified through a hazard index process, which identifies this as a high priority grid for replacement. We feel that there's benefits for the customers. We'd like to move forward with the project. You know, we'd be happy to talk in more detail if we had questions about the way the construction is actually done, how we interact with the customers, and we have an extensive customer outreach process as well. And just one thing I do want to mention, on April 15th, we will be attending a Plainfield after-school care program as part of a program that we do across the state. We're meeting with about 70 students to discuss gas safety in general, but we'll also be discussing the gas construction project and how it benefits the customers, and what the kids will see as they're walking down the streets and things like that. So we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions from council?
Sure.
Talking to Vice President?
Yes, please. Technically, how do you ensure uninterrupted service during this period?
So I'm going to call Kelly Sutter, she's our project manager. She'll be helping answer questions.
Hi, Kelly Sutter, PSCNG project manager. The uninterrupted service, we manage that by, we, excuse me. So there will be no uninterrupted service to the customers except at the time when we're tying in their services at the actual resident of the house. That's only done through an appointment that's set up ahead of time, at least two to four days prior to us going to the house, and that they would be home for that appointment as that is a need for us to turn their service on from the gas main in the street. So the gas work that we're doing on the actual mains on the streets, it's isolated, and so we're ready to do the service for the customer. So the process is, is we come through, we come down the road, we install the new gas main, the plastic main in the ground, then we have the next step of tying in that gas main to the existing gas mains that are alive. We transfer the gas service, the gas flow over to that main, and then we begin the individual services at the houses. So the appointment times are set up so that it's, technically, the customer's not impacted because they're aware that it's coming in for that day, and it's about a two to four-hour window that they would be waiting for the gas during that timeframe.
Question? Question?
Yes.
This won't affect the rates at all of the customers?
What it will impact is a reduction in their usage of gas. So ultimately, I can't give you an exact dollar amount, but with the pressure being operated in the system, it's, they're going to use less gas at the end of the day. So that is one of the benefits for the customer.
Less?
Less gas usage because we have higher rates coming into, pressure coming into the houses. So with the energy-efficient equipment that people are buying and using in their houses right now, the savings aren't ultimately being captured as much as they can because the pressure on an older system is still low, so it's still strange.
So this will, they'll be working together as a whole, too?
Correct.
And thank you, because I didn't pay my bills, so.
Just a quick one. Could you tell us what the start and end dates are for the project, and can we, can the council be provided with a list of streets affected?
Yes. So we're targeting a start date as early as April 15th, pending resolution, though, with the roads.
Yes, good councilmen, we're looking to start, first of all, with the moratorium streets that have moratorium, we have to come before you all in May to get that approved. However, the other streets that we have, such as Lake, Spring, Sumner, which we're going to do construction on anyway, we need to get those done as soon as possible. So we're looking to start them right away, doesn't require any moratorium at all. So we're looking to move forward with that, those streets.
And any projects want to take pretty much, what month are we looking to try to finish it?
We're estimating about six months, so for total construction, we're targeting to be done by mid-October. We're doing, you know, everything in our power to bring the resources in to pull that schedule to the left, but right now, based on our PSCNG crews that we have dedicated to this work, it's about a six-month logic overall. But, one thing to add with the project timeline, as we go street by street, our intent is to finish that street before we move on. So the main would be laid on that street, we'd come behind and finish the services, and we'd move in a, you know, a grid system. And I do have a street list.
And I'll provide it to council, I have it here. So I'll provide it to council to copy the streets.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
The 2019 budget liberation schedule has been distributed and duly advertised, but we will review the document and check out, you know, until, okay. Is that the time? All right. Public comments will be limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. Public comments, again, are limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening.
I'm Nate Stewart of Mossport Avenue, Plainfield. I know we all know, appreciate that our Plainfield public library is considered one of the gems of Plainfield.
It's not, it's not being considered. We're just introducing, we're not considering.
I'll be back.
Okay. Okay. See, no other public comments.
So move.
Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
MC 2019-01 through MC 1906 and 08 are scheduled for public hearing and second reading on April 9, 2019 is advertised. Are there any questions from council on these ordinances? My sixth consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. Scheduled for public hearing on April 8.
Yes, these ordinances will be up for second reading and final passage at next Monday's council meeting. We have a public hearing on these ordinances as well.
Okay. So, are there any questions for resolutions A through E? Do we have a consensus to add these to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think I saw three, four, yes, that's, okay. Are there any questions for resolutions F through H? Council President?
As a president, just to remind that H is being pulled.
Oh, that's right, H is an outlier here, that's true. So, sorry, read the script. Are there any questions for resolutions F through G?
Council President, I have a question. On resolution G, on the application, it says that the applicant is filing for the Shade Tree Commission, but they're being appointed to the zoning board. Can you just kind of explain?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
On resolution G, the application, it says that they would like to be considered for the Shade Tree Commission, but they're being appointed to the zoning board. So I was just wondering if you could have some clarification on that?
Do you have an application on that?
No, I was just asking for clarification.
On what? What do you want clarification on, okay, so?
So, on the application for, to be appointed to a board of commission, it says they want to be appointed to the Shade Tree Commission, but they're being appointed to the Zoning Board Commission.
Do you have a name?
Sure. Yes, councilwoman, clarification is, the applications that came in for the Shade Tree Commission, once we looked at their resume and the background information, we had a conversation with the resident and asked him to concede a settlement on the zoning board for us.
Advert to it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We're still, I'm not asking consensus yet because there's also an I here. So we're looking at F, G, and I. So, any questions, any more questions? Looking at F, G, and I. Okay. If not, and we have consensus to move these two, you take it?
Yes.
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 Okay. Does the corporation council have items to be considered this evening?
Yes, Council President, thank you very much. One item that I'd like to add to tonight's agenda, that is a resolution authorizing settlement in a matter of Akila Murphy versus the city of Plainfield, an amount not to exceed $49,000. That's full settlement in the case. I ask for consensus to add it to the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, there is consensus.
Yes.
Hi.
Thank you, Council.
Would the police department please present their items?
Good evening, Council President, members of council. Items J and K have submitted for.
Are there any questions from the council?
Council President, I have a question.
Yes.
Where does the revenue from the auction of the police vehicles go to?
Goes directly into the city's fund, back to Mr. West.
Thank you.
Right. Council President?
Yes?
Just like I said, it's good to see our director.
I can hear you.
It's good to see our director back with us.
Oh, we are also. Any other questions? Okay, we have consensus to add these two to the agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Would the Department of Finance please present its items?
I have item L, and with the permission of Council President, I'd like to just add a few remarks.
Yes.
Here to clarify this year's, that was running forward for introduction. In the way of background, the proposed budget for 2019 is $85,220,647. The proposed introduced budget represents a 1.61% increase over 2018. The tax impact on the average home is $181.60 for an increase of 3.55% over 2018. And, in the way of additional information, the tax impact of the proposed budget has already been reduced by $88.40 per average household over 32.74%. So that just says that we've gone through, you know, a fairly intensive process of trying to look at ways of, you know, reducing the budget. In terms of key items that impact the 2019 budget, you know, the drop in assessed valuations of $6,875,881 increases the tax burden on the average homeowner by $31. The increase in pension expenses has an impact of $49 on the average homeowner. You don't need to take it down, I have copies for you. The third item, the increase in debt service payments, which is principal and interest, represent a $58 increase for the average homeowner. And I say those three things just to say those are things that we don't control. You know, and the three items above represent $138 of the proposed $181.60 tax increase, or 75.99%. So three-quarters of the tax increase that's proposed is on items that we don't, we don't have any control over. You know, and without the increase in debt service and pension payments, which total $1,192,521, the tax increase per average home would be $76,47, which equates to 1.49%, which is below our statutory requirement of 2%. End of my report.
Thank you. Question to the council?
You just, that first item, the first increase, the 6.875 million, what was that from?
It's the drop in assessed value.
Assessed value. Roughly speaking, how does that compare to like the last couple of years? The assessed value?
Much higher than the last couple of years.
So it actually went up? Wait a minute, I don't think.
Loss. When I say higher, I'm talking about loss.
The loss is higher.
Loss is higher.
Is that from tax appeals?
Yes, it is.
Well, it's completely from, or almost all from tax appeals?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a consensus to move this item to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Would the Department of Public Works please present its items?
Madam Council President, I have six items presented, letters M to R. Are there any questions?
Counselors, any questions to the council?
Council President, I have questions. On item M, what's the timeline for the Panoni services and then construction? And will there be another opportunity for public input and public comment?
We had the public comment already, so we're looking at the full of the project. This right here, downward mountains for the construction of the project, overall construction. And the timeline, I'm saying we're talking maybe six, seven months to get this done or up to a year. Whether permitting, of course.
Okay. So it's just my hope that the concerns of the business owners were taken into consideration before the construction of the project. And how will the construction that we have going on over here affect the construction that's going on over there? Because I know a lot of the people who park in this municipal lot now park at the municipal lot that we wanted to move the business owners in that area too. So how is all of that going to affect?
That's a good question. There'd be no vast impact on residents. And just, we did, we did the presentation. It was very thorough. We had a lot of comment from the public. And everybody was happy with it. So we got six over there. There'd be plenty of parking and worked into all of that. So parking wouldn't be a problem. I think this is all on residents.
Okay. So for resolution N, I don't have a comment. Actually have, I don't have a question. I actually have a comment. And I'm glad to see Mill Campbell is getting the much needed improvements. And I'm glad that the city is working to make recreational facilities accessible to all of its residents. But I do have a question on resolution Q, the fencing for side of field. Are we only replacing the fencing around the football field? And isn't that fencing pretty new?
This is, based on the statistics of the city of Plainfield, all the fencing that we're doing now is decorative fencing throughout, based on our ordinance for fencing. So this is something that's going around the entire outside of the field, the whole perimeter. It's like 3800 feet of fencing all around, a decorated fencing.
So it's around the entire park?
Correct.
Okay. Also with this fencing at Sider, is the fencing at the pool going to be replaced? Because I know there is a portion of that fencing that is missing, like pieces to it, and it causes a safety hazard because kids can get in and get to the pool.
Good question. Anything that fits to help safety and welfare will be addressed when we start restoring the fencing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, Councilman.
Director Dabey, we know there's a lot of scheduled roadway resurfacing, but often we're asked in different locations when will their streets be done? Is there a list that the council can have?
We're putting this to give an answer under March 20 co-op, okay? And you'll definitely have a copy of it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a follow-up on Councilwoman Davis's question about item M. I know that we created streetscape design standards for downtown. And I'm just wondering, I think the document says there was a, there was a plan, there's a design plan dated 2015. I thought that we had created these standards before that, but did we just kind of update them? Do you recall? We were here in 2015, so I'm not sure who to ask.
Well, everything's been pretty much updated from 15 since I came on 16. So everything's been updated and changed, yes.
Okay. And the, the public comment, what, what was the venue for that? And when did that take place? Because I'm not, I'm just not recalling it.
I hope to give you a date, but it's going back. And we had a nice turnout from businesses and a public alike. And we addressed everything. We had concepts. We had everything there. We answered all questions. It was a nice turnout.
What, what year was it?
Last year.
Last year.
2018? Okay.
Yeah, everyone invited.
And was there like a report written from that, from that meeting?
We had some, yeah, there was a summary that was put together from that meeting that we had. Yes, it was. Because we had to send this to the federal government. This is a federal grant that we're applying for to a tap plant.
Okay, yeah. Could, could we get that? Could the council see that?
Anything we might, you can have it for the record where the councilman was invited.
Okay, no, I know that. But I'm just asking for like the, the reports so we could review it from a year ago.
Well, we have, yes, the councilman.
Okay, thank you. And the side of the field fence, I'm thinking that we're replacing a chain link fence with a metal picket fence. Is that?
It's a metal, yes, metal decorative fence, yes, it is. And I have pictures of what it looks like. The top of the fence.
There you go. All right. And that's going to make it completely around the perimeter of that city block?
The top of the fence, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have consensus of this on the agenda?
Yes. Yes.
Would the Department of Economic Development please present its items?
Okay, good evening, council. I have items S and T for submission tonight. Any questions?
Do we have a consensus of this, of the agenda?
Yes.
Is, is the?
Did you say you wouldn't ask the question? I'm sorry, I missed your hint.
Yeah, yeah, no, I do. Is the developer present tonight?
For Moon Builder, no, he's not present tonight. Not that I can see, yeah.
Did, did the economic development committee meet this person? Or this?
Yes.
Yep.
Several things. Carlos can probably provide the dates that the RFP went out for this particular project because it predates me. And then we entered into an MOU with this developer. We've been working with him since I've been here the last 12 months. And so we are recommending that he be designated for this project and for this area. Carlos, do you have something to add?
Yes, just to clarify, the councilman, this is a conditional designation that we requested, which means that it's a limited designation for 180 days, which should allow the economic development team to finalize negotiations as it relates to a potential redevelopment agreement and a potential financial agreement for the proposed project. With this developer, we've been working back and forth since early 2015. This is as a, as a result of the RFP that was approved by the council. And we went out to market and decided to, his proposal was the best proposal to fit that area. So we've been working with this particular developer since that time. And I think it's time for us to really nail down a redevelopment plan and a redevelopment agreement with it.
I commend the administration for moving quickly and aggressively on development and redevelopment. In the past, when it was a big project, the proposed developer was invited to meet with the council or at least with the economic development committee. Either way, I think would be good. So I didn't hear that happen. I couldn't, maybe I missed, I didn't hear that. But I, that's, I didn't get an affirmative answer to that question. So I'm assuming that hasn't happened yet. But I would just recommend to my colleagues and the administration going forward that we include the council at an early point when we are designating or even preliminarily designating a developer.
We have a monthly meeting with the economic development committee. They were apprised of this particular development project. And we'll be glad to bring any developer forward to that committee.
Okay. I'm just encouraging that we do it early in the process, not after the fact.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a consensus to add these?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Yes.
Would the Department of Health and Social Services please present its items?
Good evening, Council President and Council. I would like to present for consideration letter U through Z. Are there any questions?
Council President, I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Davis.
On item Z, how will this affect service to the residents?
So it, it is a grant. And until the employees no longer work for us, it's a full service. The goal is, and I strongly believe that we will get the grant. It will be posted this week. It has not been posted. This is a proactive action that we're taking. So we're not anticipating laying off people. But we also have to protect the city in case there's a delay. Most times with large grants, there could be a delay. Any kind of delay could, could be detrimental to the city. So we just want to make sure that we're ahead of this as opposed to being behind.
Okay, I have two more questions. Did the staff know ahead of time if their employment was conditional on the renewal of the grant?
Yes, they were.
Okay. And how often do we have to renew the grant?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
It's like a yearly renewal process?
This one was, this last one was a six month. Ideally, they're going to try to get back to a year, but every six months so far it's been.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm just going to reiterate, reading, the word conditional is in there. We're talking about C. And, yes, and we were.
I apologize, it is conditional.
That's down due to the, they were having big grants.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Could we get a little background on the redevelopment entry corporation memorandum of understanding?
Sure. So there are possibly about 160 individuals who returned to the city of Plainfield in, from different forms of incarceration. What we and what our goal is, the Plainfield Franchise Services is to provide linkages. So that could be case management. That could be health services or directed and referred to health services. It could be housing referrals or helping individuals receive housing. It could be helping individuals get birth certificates, which if they don't have birth certificates, they are prevented from getting job IDs and jobs. And so the whole goal in working with the corporation is that we will kind of foster the individual and provide back around services. So if they get a referral, they will send it to us to do services. And if we need help on our end, we will reach out to them to help with a particular client.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a consensus to add these items to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Will the administration please present their ordinances submitted for consideration?
Yes, Council President.
Oh, we're on the way to your night.
We're presenting MC 21909, MC 21910, MC 21911, and bond 1267 for consideration.
Do you have a question?
I probably do, but I think it would just be helpful if the administration could just summarize these.
Administrator?
MC 21909 is an ordinance adopting the amendment and reinstated redevelopment plan for the TOD North Avenue Redevelopment Area.
So what's the amendment?
I mean, what, I'm sorry. Did you look at your back?
I did, but I think it's helpful.
Did you have a specific question?
You know, it's one thing to look at your packet and read it carefully, but I think it's helpful to summarize because the public would appreciate hearing some of these initiatives.
Okay. In terms of the amendments to the ordinance, primarily we looked at the TOD Netherwood for North Avenue and for South Avenue. The primary reasons was we wanted to meet the DEP requirements for elevation in that area, particularly for mixed-use buildings. So we added that, that language into the particular document.
And that's true for 219-11 as well, different areas, South Avenue.
So elevation, that, that's building height, does that mean that you added stories?
No, it doesn't mean that we added story. The elevation is where, where the ground floor of the building. So that means that they have to build on higher ground.
Ah, okay. So just to clarify, which is stated in the package, this, the only thing it's doing is including to meet the requirements of the New Jersey DEP to make sure that all our projects induced in these two particular areas are meeting the standards of the DEP.
Okay.
219-11, Mr. West.
Yes.
And, and bond 2167 as well.
219-11 is an ordinance requesting a special emergency appropriation so the master plan of the city can be done. And the reason it's being done this way is that the $200,000 that they're looking at could spread out over five years. And you get the ability to finance it too. So that's the reason that we're taking this approach. It allows us to spread the cost that we must pay for. We just get to do it over five years.
So, question? So what's the thinking in, I mean, in the past, I think we created our master plans internally with our staff and our planning board. So we're farming it out. And I could see it could be advantages and disadvantages. But I do have a concern about people from outside the city having a bigger influence on what the residents and the city as a whole would prefer in a master plan.
We're contracting out the master plan for a number of reasons. We've added new elements to the master plan this, this time around. We also are significantly updating some of the elements of the master plan. No one individual department or firm can adequately update the master plan because it covers so many elements. So land use, transportation, infrastructure, community facilities, et cetera. So we are looking at a overall project management kind of firm that has other firms assisting it in the development of the master plan. In terms of the planning resources, we would project manage the master plan. But last time I've heard horror stories about the amount of time it took on behalf of the planning staff and the planning board itself to actually complete the master plan. We just don't have those kind of resources. We have a lot of redevelopment plans, a lot of redevelopment projects. And so our staff needs to be focused on that.
And what's the timeline for completion?
The timeline for completion is nine months to a year. We will be interviewing the master plan. Subcommittee of the planning board will be interviewing three firms to nail down who we would like to work with as well as the timeframe. So it's nine months to a year.
I know the governing body does not have a vote on this, but is part of blanking input from members of the governing body?
So the first input is we will present to you a resolution awarding a contract for the master plan. So that's the, kind of the first step. Part of the planning process for the master plan is for the group that's elected to come before the governing body to talk about the timeline and the approach for the master plan. They will spell that out. We made it quite clear that we'd like to have a number of public meetings. So part of the process will be public meetings. At each ward, there will be a youth focus group as well as a young adult focus group related to the master plan because we want to make sure that the outreach is to every ward of the community and every segment of the community.
I appreciate hearing that you're going to have public meetings across the city. I think that's really important. Thank you.
Council President, I have a question. As a follow-up to Councilwoman Stewart's question, how would these meetings be advertised?
So they'll be advertised in our local newsletter, social media, and events at the website. So I've done this most recently, updated a master plan. And so one of the things that I'd like for the contractor to do is go to our community events and advertise about the master plan. It works quite effectively. So in addition to our website, our social media, in addition to newspaper press releases, the firm will be at any major event of the city to discuss the master plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a consensus to add?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Citizens' participation. Citizens are welcome to address the council on any governmental item of concern to them, whether or not it is scheduled on the agenda above. During this portion of the agenda, a total of 60 minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, will be limited to five minutes. Large groups are urged to select someone to represent them.
Thank you. John E. Pritchard, formerly of 723 Arlington Avenue, Plainfield, now 42 and 44 Holly Street, Cranford. Two things I'd like to say to the members of the council. We need to back our soldiers, sailors, marines, coast guardmen, and airmen. We're serving our country, including those who are from our city, from Plainfield. We failed to do that during the war in Vietnam. During that time, 16 of Plainfield's sons lost their lives fighting for our country. Those who survived and returned, they were called Nazis, murderers, baby killers. I'd like to see that word Nazi retired once and for all. It's just, that, that word Nazi is just as bad as another word, which of course I will not, I repeat, will not use. The poor brave soldier in there despises, nor count him as a stranger. Remember, he's this country's stay and day and hour danger. And the other thing is this, we need to reactivate the hospital. We need to reactivate Millenburg. We need that hospital, we need that badly, and we need it ASAP. What if an 09/11 attack occurs? We'll need that hospital very, very badly. We need a hospital that's capable of mission, capable of serving citizens of Plainfield and the surrounding areas. The sooner activated Millenburg, the better off we all will be. Don't let this happen!
I apologize for being premature. I need to storm Osborne Avenue, Plainfield. As I started to say. I think we're all very familiar that our Plainfield Public Library is considered one of the gems of the city. We're well-known statewide, maybe nationally. We've got many awards and commendations for our work at that Plainfield Public Library. Well, that designation of being one of the gems of the city, I think we could kiss goodbye if the budget requests are drastically cut. The cuts, I believe, are horrendous. It would be catastrophic to our Plainfield Public Library. We can kiss goodbye all those programs that we have for our children, that we have for our parents, that we have for adults, if these cuts are made. When our kids come in the summer for their Saturday greeting programs and contests and activities, the doors are going to be shut. When the adults presently come in the evenings to use the many, many resources that we have, which help them train for jobs, prepare for jobs, learn English, all kinds of things that they need to get ahead. The doors are going to be closed. I think we need to be very careful as we look at the budget cuts that are proposed, and I just ask that the council, I know you will give it very serious, and most of you are concerned, but I ask that you ask yourselves this question. Will these cuts harm our Plainfield citizens? And would we want to put that hurt on our children, our adults, our business people, our government resources? Because they will.
Council President, may I, may I? Yeah, we'd like to address and make sure that the public understands that the proposed introduced budget is, is not having any cuts for the library. The library will still be funded at the same level that it was previous years. But just like any other division that we looked at, you know, from top to bottom in preparing budget, obviously, a lot of our different departments, divisions, including, including our library, we come in with a high of requests. So a lot of our divisions say, no, you're not going to get any more money, but at least the library is getting back to the same level at 2018. So there's no cuts being made for the library.
So, I can say a lot of things tonight, Timothy Priano, Martina Avenue, but I'm just going to save it on a few things.
You can say a lot.
No, no need. We'll do other areas to help. Around the city, the seniors are not surviving with the tax increases. The county's giving us an increase, the city's going to increase on these homes. What are they going to do? Two of our neighbors on Martine, they're barely making their tax payments. They own their homes, but they are not, their investments aren't doing well. Where are we keep going with the tax? We're spending money here in the city beyond. We give away so much money to improve things, which is a positive, but we have to control. These senior citizens in the city are losing it. They're not going to be able to keep their homes anymore. They're going to have to sell and move on. And places where they love, there's no senior housing for them that's accommodating from a home. So they have to leave our community completely. But we're spending tons of money on outside vendors in the city, still waiting for my opers to come back, how much Panoni spends has been given, still waiting for Neshwan, no one gives a number. But we just keep on giving away. And the people in the city have to realize that this was their home, but it's not going to be their home much longer, because people are going to have to sell their homes and move on. Thank you.
Bernice Paglia, 12877th Street. Um, I'd like to bring to the council's attention something that's going on. Apparently, it costs the city in terms of big rent increases per month. And I found out that although people are being asked to pay $200 to $300 per month or more for their apartments, um, the city gets no value from that because the assessments have, are remaining the same. And it's sort of an untenable thing. My, in my particular case, my basic social security and pension, that's my monthly income. It, it takes up my total social security, 66% of my, my income goes to rent down to Lakeview. And I think it is ultimately going to have an, an effect on Plainfield at large, especially because we're seeing more and more rentals. The people that happen to make these sales and publicize them bragged about a 50% appreciation rate in property. And I wasn't sure what that meant, but apparently it means they get more money. And the tenant may have to live because they can't afford it. Thank you.
Nanjing 1478 South Avenue. We went to the planning board meeting for the South Avenue development plan for Wawa, but we were told to come back and speak to the council because there were hundreds of us who were against the idea of having that gas station up there. So my question is, is there a plan to rediscuss those options? What is the plan for the council? Because supposedly, nobody likes the idea, but it was told that the development plan was made, but it was not reevaluated. So what's happening next with that? There was no public feedback taken, nobody likes the idea, and the planning board kept putting it back on the council. So was there any study done based on which that redevelopment plan was made? And if that was not considered, who actually made the decision? What are, what are we doing next with that? Like, is it planned from the council?
The next step for the planning board application is for them to come back, Wawa, to come back before the planning board for final approval once they meet the conditions that were outlined at the meeting. And so, yes, we did have about a little over 100 residents, or residents and business owners come out. Uh, but again, that's not necessarily a cross-section of the public. So when we did the study, the study was done by the planning board. Uh, I forget the timeframe, but I can certainly meet with you and tell you the timeframe. So the study was done by the planning board. Council then was presented with the resolution to adopt it as an area in need of redevelopment, and also later to adopt a redevelopment plan. And so those are the steps that lead to the designation of an area and the permitted uses. And so, again, a convenience store with a fuel station is one of the permitted uses as per the redevelopment plan. And so that's not being revisited in terms of the redevelopment plan unless council decides to direct the planning board to go back and relook at it. But given the application that's before the planning board, the planning board's job is to determine if that application meets the requirements of the redevelopment plan. They gave preliminary site plan approval based on a few conditions, and they are likely to do final site plan approval. I think one of the things that we mentioned at that meeting, or at least the chair mentioned, and also the attorney for the board, is one of the things that we will not regulate is competition. I know that you are the 7-11 owner.
It's not about the competition.
Competition, okay.
It's not about anything.
Go back and forth.
Go back and forth.
So, we can, my things, no, that was very personal, I was not, we shouldn't have made that. But irrespective of me, I was not the only one present there. There were hundreds of other people. So the idea the planning board said was to go back to the council to make sure that what decision they made was a correct decision.
No, that's not, I'm sorry.
Council President, the speaker's time is up.
I thought so, yeah.
So we were advised that...
Thank you for bringing your comments. She gave the answer.
So the answer is that the council is not planning to revisit and check whether the development plan...
Council President, the speaker's time is up.
Time is elapsed.
I know, I know. So, good time to sign. Thank you. Go on, I'm prepared to.
Just a comment on that. It would take four members of the council to re, to revisit the redevelopment plan. So I don't know that we have four members. I would certainly be interested, but it would really be up to the council majority to do that. So if you're interested in talking about this further, and you're a member of the community, then you should, you should speak to your council members.
Seeing no other public coming forward, putting in a motion to close?
So be.
All in favor? May I have a motion to adjourn?
No, second.
Uh, all in favor?